For them and any others that may have passed in our town. All right, thank you. All right, we'll move right on down the line here. Have a motion to adopt the agenda as it is.
I'll make the motion.
Move. Second, King.
Ten-four, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Don's an aye. Jim raised his hand, he's an aye. Jeff? Ten-four. All right, next is the consent agenda. Motion to accept that.
Who to accept the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, Jim, I'm sorry, Mike, did you make a second? Who made the motion?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Okay, I did, okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye, let's aye.
Jim, Jeff?
King, aye.
All right, with that, we'll move to public comments. Do we have any public comments come in, Zach?
To my knowledge, we haven't received any public comments. I don't know if Sherry's audio works or not, but she's shaking her head. She hasn't received any public comments either. So no, we don't have any public comments for this evening.
Okay, well then we'll move right along to the staff updates.
All righty, I'll go ahead and start us off. So tomorrow, we're anticipating that the paving project will start at 103 Manacy Street. So we'll be getting started on that. Great job to the Public Works Department last week in getting that pipe sleeve buried for future set tank needs for Paxton. So we're glad we got that in the ground and that squared away. And everything should be proceeding tomorrow with the paving project. Otherwise, everybody's doing a great job and continuing to operate with everything going on. So just want to commend all our staff on continuing to do a great job. And especially keep my thoughts with our law enforcement officers as well with everything going on in the world. So they continue to show up every day and do a great job. And I'm proud of every one of them. So just want to recognize them during this time. But otherwise, that's the majority of what we have. We'll have our follow-up meeting on Wednesday at 6:00 PM to vote on the public hearing items that we discussed this evening. And otherwise, everything's continuing as usual or as normal as it can be with the events that we're encountering these days. So I'm with that. I don't believe Public Works is with us this evening. Like I mentioned, they had been working on the parking lot this past week. They're also doing some paving projects or some pothole repair projects throughout the town. And I did want to mention that really quickly. Switch my screen over so everybody can see that. This is the pavement and the paving repairs and priority map throughout the town. And so we've, so basically, if you go on the website under road maintenance, there's a form here for reporting potholes. We've had quite a few people who have reported potholes. I believe some of y'all have even submitted some potholes. And so as they address these potholes, they'll actually take a picture once they're complete. I'll go ahead and click on one over on Pine Lake, and you can see the completed patch once those potholes have been complete. And so the status will change to show that those have been completed. They knocked out a couple of others over in Old Cape Carteret this past week. So just, they're doing a great job at keeping on top of those. And as those requests come in, we'll continue to put those on the map and update accordingly to reflect that. Otherwise, they've been doing some work on some of the repairs to Town Hall and also mowing the right of ways throughout the town.
All right, sounds good, looks good. Next up would be... It was clicking in, I guess. It was clicking in, I guess. Somebody asking a question? Then we'll move on to item seven, which is the public hearing on the FY 2020-2021 budget.
All righty. And I don't think we had, I know we have Chief with us, or he was on here this evening, just in case he had any comments. I don't know if Chief is still on here or not, but anyways.
I am with you guys, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'm with you guys, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'm with you guys, can you hear me? I'm having internet.
We can hear you.
Did you say open for comment?
Yeah, if you've got anything to share from the police department, just want to make sure you had opportunity.
I appreciate it. Good evenings, everyone, and just want to say we're seeing a tremendous increase in traffic lately. We posted the stats on Facebook, and the guys have stepped up some of the traffic stops now. They did 125 stops this past month. We had 85 complaints, calls for service, including 10 animal complaints. We had 10 traffic crashes last month and four arrests, including two DWIs. That's all I've got for now.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, Mayor, just wanted to make sure since he was on here, give him the opportunity. I was getting a little bit of echo off it, it sounded like we were in a cave.
I heard him twice.
All right, I think he just hopped off, but I think, I think we're good now. I'm not hearing any echo anymore. All right, so if we're good, I'll go ahead and move on to the, to the budget. I'll go ahead and pull that up. All right, so on the screen right now, we've got the budget ordinance for FY 2020-2021. The budget is balanced at $1,632,803 for revenue and $1,632,803 for expenditures. The tax rate will remain the same at .2125 per hundred dollars of valuation. And that's pretty much the, that's a quick summary of it. Be happy to get into more detail. But we've put together all of the pages where the budget documented, prepared the graph and everything else, which are available on the town website. So those are on there, if people want to go and review those. And then it has everything on there, including the budget message and everything else. If you go under the Town Manager tab and look under that page that has the budget documents, you can see all of this information on there. Like I said, be happy to answer any questions, but I want to thank the board for everybody's hard work on the budget. Also want to thank Sandy for all of her work and all of the contributions she made to the budget process and to helping get all the information and the numbers together and helping with the analysis of each of the departments. So I want to thank Sandy for that. But that's everything I have in terms of the budget. Be happy to answer any questions, or if not, then y'all could proceed into the public hearing portion.
Zach, let's have a little reminder about this because we are virtual. It's a different procedure we're having to go through for the public hearing aspect of it.
Yes, so for today, what you guys would do is somebody make a motion, and second, it's open the public hearing, allow for public comments if there are any. If there are none, then could go ahead and make the motion to close the public hearing. And then, because we'll have to wait those 24 hours after the public hearing to allow for any additional comments, we'll do that. And on Wednesday for our follow-up meeting, that's when the budget can be voted on.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to start the public hearing.
I'll make a motion, we're going to public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, gentlemen, all in favor? Okay, I see Steve Dunn. So all the hands are raised. Mike, I need a verbal for... Mike King, you still there? Mike, Mike, are you with us?
There. Zach, somebody muted me. Yes.
We're here, okay, we're here, you know, okay. Thank you. All right, so we are now into the public hearing. Is there anyone online that wanted to comment? I can't see everybody, so Zach, I'm at your mercy on this.
Yeah, and I just, I just pressed the unmute all button. So in case there is any comments, we'll entertain those now. I believe Scott is on the line, that's the only person other than, I believe Brad Rich from the public, as far as I can see, in the attendance, or the attendees list, so...
Okay. All right, well, I guess with nobody making any comment, then we entertain a motion to come out of the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close public hearing on the budget.
I'll second.
Thanks, Steve, thank you, Don, all in favor?
King, aye.
Ten-four, I see four hands and a aye from Mr. King, thank you, all in favor. All right, next up is the public hearing on the Pamlico Sound Hazard Mitigation Plan. I assume we'll do the same thing with this.
Yes, that's correct. Just a moment while I get to that part. All right, so we've been participating in the Pamlico Sound Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan over the past several months. That's a regional plan, and it's something that we have to do every several years. Additional details about the plan can be viewed at the www.pamlicohmp.com. It's important to have a hazard mitigation plan in place, especially for storm events, you know, in terms of FEMA funding, this is a critical element, is having a adopted and FEMA-approved hazard mitigation plan. This is addressed, this addresses the region's response to different natural disasters and how those will be handled. And this has been a collaborative process. We've attended several of the meetings that have taken place regionally. We've also had citizen involvement from some of our residents in the town, where we've traveled to those meetings as well to be in attendance. So what's requested this evening would be to have the public hearing, and then this would be voted on at the Board of Commissioners' follow-up meeting on Wednesday.
All right, I think we have a motion to go into... Okay, ten-four. Motion to go into public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? All in favor, show your hand.
King, aye.
Thank you, Mike. All hands are up, all in favor, thank you, gentlemen. And now we're in the public hearing aspect. If there's anyone online would like to make a comment. All right, with no comments online, then I will entertain a motion to exit the public hearing on the Pamlico Sound Hazard Mitigation Plan. Okay, thank you. Jeff, a second.
Second.
See the hands, they're all in favor?
Aye.
And Mike King gives the verbal aye. All right, thank you, gentlemen. Next is the budget amendment for the Cape Carteret Trail.
All right, so I've got this on the screen now. Basically, this is a housekeeping item for the auditor. This is something that we had got comments in our last audit to get this, this item addressed. So we wanted to do that before the end of the fiscal year. These funds are primarily geared towards the remaining engineering and design costs that John Freshwater's been working on. So some of these have already been expended in the sense that he's done some of the work. There's also some additional work remaining, but this represents, this makes sure that we're covered for any of those remaining expenses as he finalizes the remaining design portions of the trail. And as we get the additional survey sections in, so this is pretty much just the housekeeping item to shift those funds around and to make sure that we have everything in place so that when we, when we are invoiced for those charges, that we're able to pay those.
I'm going to move to accept the amendment.
Thank you, Jim, have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion, gentlemen?
Yes, this is Mike King. Zach, and a percentage of the total trail is originally planned, what, do you have a rough number of what percentage of the engineering is completed?
Um, I would say, I know he's waiting on several of the section, the surveys for the sections to come back. He's done a lot of the work where I think he can overlay that onto the surveyed section. So I don't know if we can say 50% or somewhere in that ballpark. I know he's just waiting on those surveys to come in so that he can, he's basically gone through and we've identified where the elevated boardwalk sections would be versus the asphalt trail section, done all of that analysis. And that was done for the Part F grant, to make sure that we had accurate numbers for that grant submission. But um, yeah, I know it's, we're probably still several weeks out from having everything put together. Based off what we have, he, John Freshwater's also getting some cost estimates from local contractors to make sure that we're in line on the cost and that, you know, if the bond referendum does pass, that we have sufficient funds through that bond to be able to complete all the remaining portions of the trail.
Yeah, so, once he completes these things that he's already begun, I would assume that we would, efforts would stop until we have the results of the referendum?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any comment? Nothing, I'll ask all in favor?
King, aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, I see the hands, and I heard your mic. Next up is the selection of the Phase One Contractor.
All righty, so the town has been working to solicit proposals from contractors to do the Phase One post-storm debris clearing activities within the town. Our current contracts expire at the end of June, so I definitely want to make sure that we got this squared away before July 1st. So we received two submissions that met the deadline. One of the submissions was from Custom Tree Care, and they proposed a rate of $275 per hour. And then the other was from TFR Enterprises, and they proposed a rate of $58,000 for a 70-hour clearing scenario, which worked out to $828.57 per hour. Based on the submissions that were received, town staff would recommend selecting Custom Tree Care as the Phase One post-storm debris clearing contractor. So the Board of Commissioners are asked to consider selecting Custom Tree Care as the Phase One post-storm debris clearing contractor pursuant to the RFP and submitted documentation, and to authorize the Town Manager in consultation with the Town Attorney to enter into a multi-year contract commencing July 1st, 2020, and ending June 30th, 2023.
All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept, appoint Custom Tree Care as Phase One Contractor.
Thank you, Steve, have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Don, any discussion?
Yeah.
One question, is that Custom Tree Care the same company that did, provided service at Florence?
Yes, yeah, they're the same company that came in and did the debris removal after Hurricane Florence.
Out of Kansas, I think, but my memory serves me correct, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's true.
I was highly satisfied with those people.
Yeah, Mayor, I just had one question. I've never seen this before, essentially going out to 2033, does that mean that we won't have to be doing this every year as we've done for the last 20?
Yes, that's correct. We did a multi-year contract rather than doing an individual year so that we don't have to go through this process, you know, year after year. We're actually stretching it out. And I think it's good because we're locking in better rates for an extended period of time.
Well, yes, I totally agree with that. And it's also a contractor that does that kind of work for us, to have the assurance that he has this, this work going out forward is also good business. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, anybody else have any comment? If not, I'll ask all in favor?
King, aye.
Okay, four hands and a verbal from Commissioner King. Motion carries. And now on to the selection of Phase Two Contractor.
Be just a moment, I gotta navigate to that portion of the meeting packet. All right, so the town recently solicited for steel bids for Phase Two debris removal and for an optional hazardous tree abatement contract. So we received four different submissions for the Phase Two debris removal. This involves removing vegetative debris throughout the town from the right of ways, from the town parks, and also removing the C and D following a storm event. This would also be a multi-year contract ending in 2023, in June 30th, 2023. So we received four different proposals. Basically, we had each of the proposers indicate what their per cubic yard rate would be based off of the different sites that may be available following a storm event. So for Custom Tree Care, in the 1 to 5 mile range, it was $6.20 per cubic yard, or $62 per ton. For the 10 to 15 mile range, it was $6.20 per cubic yard, or 62 per ton. In the 30 to 40 mile range, it was $7.20 per cubic yard and 72 per ton. The closest comparison to that was to, was TFR Enterprises. In the 1 to 5 mile range, it was $5.90 per cubic yard, or $89 per ton. 10 to 15 miles, it was $7.80 per cubic yard, or 115 per ton. And 30 to 40 miles, it was $8.65 per cubic yard, or $145 per ton. So those were the two closest. And evaluating those two proposals, we took an average cost based off those distances because there's no guarantee of which sites will be open following a storm. After Florence, we had a site that was in that 1 to 5 mile range up in Pelletier that was available. However, after Hurricane Dorian, there were no sites that were opened up in the county, so all of the debris had to go to Hibbs Road. So based off that, that's why we took an average. And then on the event we couldn't take it to Hibbs Road, we'd have to bring it to Tuscarora, and that would be in that 30 to 40 mile, mile range. So that was the analysis that we applied. And since Custom Tree Care had an average of $6.53 per cubic yard, whereas the average cost for TFR Enterprises would be $7.45 per cubic yard, the recommendation would be to go with Custom Tree Care. We also did an analysis based off of the hazardous tree abatement project and comparing the lowest two, which was KDF Enterprises and Custom Tree Care. Custom Tree Care came in at an average cost of $127.11, whereas KDF Enterprises represented an average cost of $221.67. Also, based on the evaluation of those cost proposals, Custom Tree Care came in at a cost of $24 per limb as opposed to KDF, which was $70 per limb. Typically, after a storm event, the limbs are going to be the most substantial number of items that we're going to encounter. That's probably the majority of the work that gets done is the limbs. So I think that's an important metric to consider and evaluate. So based off the average cost and the anticipation, the anticipated need after a storm of having to cut more limbs than we would trees or other items, the recommendation from staff would be to select Custom Tree Care. The requested action would be for the Board of Commissioners to consider selecting Custom Tree Care as the Phase Two debris removal and hazardous tree abatement contractor pursuant to the RFP and submitted documentation, and to authorize the Town Manager in consultation with the Town Attorney to enter into a multi-year contract commencing on July 1st, 2020, and ending on June 30th, 2023.
All right, well, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Custom Tree Care as the selection of our Phase Two Contractor.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Don.
King, second. King, second.
Any, any discussion?
I have a couple of comments I wanted to make. This appears to me to be the first time in 20 years we've had the same contractor doing both. Is that correct, Zach, as far as you know?
Yes, as far as I know, that is, I believe that's correct, from what I've seen. I definitely think, aside from this, there are advantages. If you have the same contractor that's been mobilized, once they're mobilized under Phase One, I do think there's definitely a convenience and a quickness of response time for them to be able to start tackling Phase Two. But obviously, that's not a consideration in how we're awarding the proposals, but just an added benefit of having the same contractor for both of those.
Absolutely. A second question, did any of the contractors attend the bid opening?
We did not have any that attended the bid opening. We conducted it at Town Hall this past Friday, and we also broadcasted it online at a link that was provided in the RFP, but we did not have any folks who were in attendance.
Thank you, that's all the comments I have.
What, what terms the size of the limb, do we consider a limb?
So for the, for the Disaster Monitoring Services Contractor, they're with the contractor as they're going through the town. So preliminarily, typically, our Public Works Department will work to identify the locations, if there's leaning trees, hazardous stumps, hanging limbs and other things, that's how we do that first round of... uh, that's how we do that first round of identification. And then the Disaster Monitoring Services Firm is actually there with them as they make their way through the town and they document every single limb that is cut. They measure it, they take pictures, they indicate a geographic location where the limb was cut and then all that information is submitted to FEMA for reimbursement. Um, but, uh, typically, that's, that's all done as they make their way street by street. But, uh, we do a preliminary analysis and identify the most significant portions. And then also, our Public Works Department is out there throughout the project and just, um, checking in and making sure that, that all those limbs and hazardous trees are getting addressed.
Is, is there a measurement difference between a limb and a branch?
No, I feel like the, how we spot it was hanging limbs over two inches in diameter. Um, so if it's greater than two inches in diameter, it would fall into the, into that category of being eligible to be removed and then reimbursed by FEMA.
Any other comments? If not, all in favor, please show a hand.
King, aye.
Thank you, Mike, for your verbal. Alright, all in favor. That passion passes. Uh, next on the agenda is the selection of a Disaster Monitoring Service Contractor.
Alrighty, same thing with this one. Uh, so we recently solicited proposals for Disaster Monitoring Services and that's, uh, performing that function I just talked about and that's, uh, supervising, um, the Hazardous Tree Abatement Project and then also the debris removal. So that involves certifying the trucks, um, setting up a observation tower at the dump site to monitor the loads. Um, so, uh, this is an essential function of making sure that we get FEMA reimbursement. Um, it's very critical to that, to verifying that all the loads are properly packed and that they're full, uh, but also certifying that all the trucks are the correct cubic, uh, yardage, um, that's indicated. So, we received, uh, three different proposals. Um, one was from Debris Tech, uh, and that was for, basically, the way we did it was that we added up what the total daily amount would be, um, for the firm. And then we also looked at all the rates and established an average daily amount for what it would cost per position that they indicated. Uh, so Debris Tech indicated, or provided a proposal that reflected a total daily amount of $397, uh, with an average daily total of $30.54. Uh, Florida Disaster Consultants provided a total daily amount of $655.50 and that would be an average daily amount of $50.42. And Summit Design and Engineering Services provided a total daily amount of $1,245 and that works out to an average daily amount of $95.77, uh, cents per position. Um, so based on the bids received, town staff would recommend selecting Debris Tech as the contractor to provide disaster monitoring services for the town of Cape Codarette. Uh, this is based off their average daily totals, um, as well as their total daily amount and that being substantially lower than the other, uh, proposals that were received. Uh, the requested action would be for the Board of Commissioners to consider selecting Debris Tech as the Disaster Monitoring Services Contractor pursuant to the RFP and the submitted documentation and to authorize the town manager in consultation with the town attorney to enter into a multi-year contract commencing July first, 2020 and ending on June 30th, 2023.
Alright, well, I will entertain a motion to select Debris Tech as our Disaster Monitoring Services Contractor.
Motion to approve, uh, Debris Tech?
Thank you, Mike.
I'll second.
Thank you, Don. Any discussion, gentlemen? Alright, with no discussion, uh, all in favor, please?
King, aye.
Alright, four hands and one vocal is, uh, all in favor. Thank you very much. Uh, next up is the TNT Fireworks.
Alrighty, so we recently received a conditional use permit application from TNT Fireworks for a temporary fireworks stand to be located at 106 Manatee Street in Cape Codarette, um, which I believe should be on Golf and Dolphin Drive, uh, next to Ribeye. Um, the subject, the subject property is located in the B20 Commercial Zoning District of the town. Uh, the town has historically authorized a fireworks stand at this location. Uh, the fireworks stand would be located, um, it was, and I think that's incorrect. I apologize for that. Um, it would actually be located next to the Ribeyes on Golf and Dolphin Drive. And the authorized agent for the CUP is Taylor Booth, um, and the property owner is Paxton Holt. Um, so the town of Cape Codarette Code of Ordinances indicates that itinerant merchants must obtain a conditional use permit from the Board of Commissioners prior to commencing the described activity. Uh, so that's why we're presenting this to the board, um, to stay consistent with what the ordinance indicated. Like I mentioned, we have issued this permit for several years in the past as a zoning permit. Um, however, with, uh, with identifying this process, we're following the process described for itinerant merchants, um, as they come forward with different requests for the town. Um, so the requested action is for the Board of Commissioners to consider approving the conditional use permit application for TNT Fireworks. And, um, that should be at a, at the address located on Golf and Dolphin Drive. Um, I'll pull that up in just a moment on GIF to confirm it. Um, but we have the conditional use permit application here. Go ahead and scroll through that. And there's the, that was where the error would be, so it's a hun, it's 106 Golf and Dolphin Drive and it indicates the property owner's address, 106 Manatee Street. I apologize for the confusion, but it is, I believe, a 106 Golf and Dolphin Drive, um, next to, next to Ribeye. And in terms of the process, I sent out the conditional use permit worksheet earlier, uh, with the weekly update. Um, I can pull that up, uh, and have that on the screen as, as y'all make your way through, um, considering the conditional use permit application. And then, uh, also Brett can weigh in on the process. Um, I think we can do it a little bit more condensed, um, in terms of not having to make as many motions as we did last time. Um, and like I said, I'd be happy to answer any questions I'm able to, uh, for the proposed conditional use permit for the itinerant merchant.
Yeah, one question, Zach, is this the same outfit that's been here, uh, in previous years?
Yes, it is. Yeah, they're the same ones that sit up in that same location every year. Um, we used to issue zoning permits for it, but with changing gears on a different way of approaching this, um, we've decided to have to go through the itinerant merchant process. Um, so that's why we're going this route this year.
Okay. Alright, well, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, accept the, uh, conditional use permit for TNT Fireworks as.
Mr. Mayor, this is Brett the Seals here. I, I think first we need to check and see if, um, anybody came to the comment on this from the public.
Okay. Can you? Okay, so do we need to go into a, uh, a public hearing, so to speak, for this?
No, sir, I think just asking, um, if there's anybody that signed up to speak on the matter would be sufficient.
Okay, Zach, do we have anybody or anybody that's online right now that would?
Uh, so I don't believe we have anybody with us online and to my knowledge, we did not receive any public comments on the proposed conditional use permit.
Okay, with, with this though, just to get some clarity, so we vote on this, is this one, we'll have to redo Wednesday?
No, it, it does not require a public hearing, so we should not have to redo this on Wednesday.
Okay, just want to make sure I'm not fluffing up here. Okay, so with no comments, uh, then I will entertain that motion for the conditional use permit for TNT Firework.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Don.
King, second.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion?
Uh, the only point I'd make is, uh, I, this is an ongoing process now for, I think, 22 years since I've been here. Uh, different place, but same deal.
Any other discussion? Were you done, Mike? I'm sorry to mean to cut you off.
Yes, I'm sorry, I, I should have said I was.
Okay. Anybody else have any more discussion? If not, all in favor?
King, aye.
Mike, soft mayor.
Okay, well, that motion carried, uh, and next up is Commissioner Reports. I'm just gonna start down the line with who I see and if you got something to say, speak up. Uh, first up, uh, Commissioner Jim Nailitz.
I have nothing to add today.
Alright, Commissioner Waters.
Let's take the staff again, it's like, uh, what's, when what Zach says earlier, they're doing a modifying job in the work that they're doing. Uh, I was actually one of the ones that called in the pothole over there in Pond Lake Village and they, quite quickly, so I appreciate them doing that as well with the staff with their, for your work. Sure, for the town.
Thanks, sir. Uh, Commissioner Martin?
With, uh, everything going on in our country today, I think I'm ever more mindful that, uh, appreciation that, that I, I personally have for our police department. Uh, and, uh, want them to know that I will support them 110%. Zach, uh, staff, uh, thanks for doing a fine job, keeping ball rolling, keeping town going. Uh, Public Works, fine job. I can see a lot of, uh, a lot of things getting done, getting excited about the parking lot being done. Uh, maybe, uh, getting started on the KAMA facility, uh, really getting pumped up about that. Especially thinking about, uh, getting back to normal, hopefully, soon, if there is such a thing anymore in this world. But, um, thanks again to all the staff and, and, and employees at the town for the job they do and, uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner King?
Uh, no report, but I have a question for town manager. Uh, where do they locate the pipe in the parking lot?
So it's even with the, uh, two boxes that are located behind, um, behind Subway. So it lines up there. We, we had Dan Forten out there who will probably be the one to install it one day if it, you know, if and when it needs to be installed and that was the best location for it to go to line up. Uh, but we stubbed it up on both sides. He provided all the materials and everything. Um, so it's, uh, it's where, um, where Paxton wanted it to go and then also based off the discussion with Dan Forten where it needed to be for a future, um, expansion if necessary.
Okay, so it's towards the western end of the lot there, uh? Not in the right way, but in the?
It's towards the, it'd be towards the eastern end of the lot because the actual boxes for the septic system are, uh, one's for grease trap and the other ones for the septic system. Those are located, uh, more towards the eastern portion of the lot. Um, so they're in line with that so that they would be able to connect the piping, um, rather than having to go. Yeah, and that, that was based off of, uh, actually meeting on site with Paxton and, uh, talking about it with, uh, Dan Forten as well to make sure it was the location that, that worked for everybody.
Thank you. No further comment.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Miller?
Uh, nothing to report. I just want to echo what's already been said is how much I appreciate town staff and all of town employees for everything, the tremendous job they've been doing in the past two to three months through some very trying times and, uh, I think they've all done a phenomenal job. And, uh, with, with the police department and, uh, I don't know if Chief McKinney's still on here or not, but let them know that our, that our thoughts and prayers, that right now they're short an officer and they're probably gonna be short for quite a while. As everybody knows, Officer Hayden's in the hospital, was involved in a motorcycle accident and it sounds like he's gonna probably be out for several weeks, if not months. So I'd just like to let them know we're thinking about him and thinking about them as they continue to do the job they've been doing shorthanded.
Thank you, Don. I would concur with that. I tell you, it's a, it would be a horrible, horrible time to be a police officer right now. I can just imagine, uh, you know, the scrutiny they're going through right now and a lot of these towns talking about defunding their police departments. I, you know, soften the language however you want to, man, it's, it's crazy. I just, I'm just so glad we've, we've got such a great department here that I've seen and they also be very personable and, uh, just great guys. They're out here doing a great job for us, all our staff as well, just have to echo that. And with that comment, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting until, I guess we'll meet again Wednesday.
I will make that motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
King, aye.
The hands. King says yes. And I see Steve's hand. Alright. Thanks, everybody who was here. Thanks to all the staff that joined us this evening and if anybody else was online, uh, we'll be meeting again, uh, Wednesday, 6:00 PM to finalize everything, give everybody a chance. If you would like to make a public comment, please email us, let us know and we'd be more than glad to make your voice heard. Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.